Okay, I think I did my job. Okay, I did. I was in charge of getting rid of the window thing up there on the screen. So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gig Harbor City Council Meeting of Monday, January 23rd, 2023. The time is 5:32 PM. I will do a roll call from my far left. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Storset.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lichten.
Here.
She's here virtually. Welcome. Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Here.
And it's so great to say, Councilmember Martin, welcome for her very first council meeting with us, Monday night council meeting. And if you would all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Squabapsh Band of the Pialup Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of their people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Council, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to accept the second.
Okay, first and second, all of those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, we have a little lag. Okay, motion passes. Seven zero. Thank you, Council. Um, we have a couple presentations tonight. One I am, well, both I'm very excited about, but the first one is a proclamation to honor Mary Damaris, our downtown Gig Harbor Downtown Waterfront Alliance Executive Director. Well, just recently retired executive director. So I would like to read this from here where everybody can hear me and then I'll meet you at the at the podium. So this proclamation honoring Gig Harbor Downtown Waterfront Alliance Executive Director Mary Damaris upon her retirement. Whereas Mary Damaris has faithfully and expertly guided the Gig Harbor Downtown Waterfront Alliance over the past 13 years. And whereas under Mary's leadership, the alliance has grown to be one of the strongest, most successful Washington State Main Street programs. The alliance has received 12 Excellence on Main Awards during Mary's tenure, including organizational excellence in 2017. And most recently, Mary was awarded the 2022 Excellence on Main Award for Leadership on Main. And whereas the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, under Mary's guidance, has achieved state and national Main Street accreditation and is known for many signature events such as Girls Night Out, Sippin' Strolls, the waterfront Farmer's Market, It's a Wonderful Waterfront, multiple holiday events, and Summer Waterfront Walking Tours, among many others. And whereas Mary has served on the city's Lodging Tax Advisory Board for the past 12 years, providing invaluable guidance and expertise on tourism promotion for the city. And whereas Mary's tireless efforts have contributed greatly to preserving and enhancing the small town charm and unique character of the city of Gig Harbor and have played an integral role in making Gig Harbor a city that is a cherished hometown for its residents and beloved destination by its many visitors. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tracy Markley, Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and gratitude for Mary Damaris's dedication and commitment to the city and congratulate her on the occasion of her retirement and wish her the best and continued success in her future endeavors and the next chapter in her life. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 23rd day of January 2023.
You'll want to hold them for your picture.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I want to say to the mayor and to the city council, thank you so much for the kind words. Thank you for all the support you've given to the alliance over the years. It's a wonderful partnership. You, your staff, you have an incredible staff that works with us on so many of our events. We couldn't do it without them. And I want to give special acknowledgement to my team, to Josh and Heidi, who has been the backbone of the alliance for many years. My board of directors or a number of you here, it's been a big team effort and I've loved it. I'm not going to say goodbye to Gig Harbor. I feel like this is my home away from home. So does my husband. But we're, we're looking forward to our retirement, more time with our grandkids, but definitely you have not seen the last of me. I do believe somebody wants me to volunteer for. But so thank you to everybody for your support. As a community, we've really grown and I think that we've done some great things for Gig Harbor. So thank you very much.
All right. So our second presentation this evening is another proclamation. This is to recognize Black History Month. Whereas each year, Black History Month is observed in February. And whereas the origin, the origins of Black History Month date back to 1915, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the organization known today as the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African American history and acknowledge the centuries of struggles for equality and freedom. And whereas Black History Month celebrates the achievements of African Americans in the arts, civil rights, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, military, music, politics, science, sports, and other endeavors. Now therefore, I, Tracy Markley, Mayor of the City of Gig Harbor, do here proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month and encourage everyone to observe this month by acknowledging the history and challenges faced by African Americans and paying tribute to this community for its strength, perseverance, character, and contributions, all of which enrich our lives. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Gig Harbor to be affixed this 23rd day of January 2023. Thank you. And so moving right along, we are going to have a staff report from our GIS coordinator, Mike Simmons. Welcome. And actually, before we do that, I'd like to acknowledge all of our staff that are here tonight. Our city clerk, Josh Stecker, our city administrator, Katrina Knudsen, our city attorney, Daniel Kenny, and Mike Simmons, our GIS coordinator. Carla Seema is our Community Development Director, Jeff Langholm, Public Works Director, and way in the back, Shannon Costandie, our Human Resources Director. Thank you all staff for being here tonight. Oh, and Kelly Bucy, who's hiding behind Daniel. To keep us safe tonight, Chief Bucy. I didn't, I didn't have to forget you. You literally are like out of my line of sight. Daniel's like, yeah, there you go. Now I can see you. Um, so go ahead, Mike. This is the Harbors Atlas presentation and we're so excited to hear about this.
Okay. Let's see if we can get this microphone working. All right. Yeah, thank you very much for the introduction. I appreciate it and I appreciate your time tonight. Let me share this with you. The GIS has come a long way, I hope, in the last three and a half years that I've been here. For those of you that might not be familiar, GIS is, stands for Geographic Information Systems. So it's essentially data that provides a spatial or geographic location. And I don't know why my screen is blinking. So apologize for that. So what we're dealing with is essentially data that has spatial location associated with it, which is where we're at. Uh, I've been working feverishly for the last couple of years with staff to create a very similar in-house viewer that you're going to see tonight. Trying to work through all the bugs, finding out what works, what's useful, what's most beneficial. So that when we got to a point where we could roll it out for a public facing viewer, it would be something that would be quite useful. And not, not something that would be too cumbersome to try to use. So with that being said, let's go ahead and just kind of dive into some of this. You can get to, you can get to the public mapper through the city website on the how do I? And then there's a link to city maps that'll bring you over to this area here. And we have two online city maps available. One is an interactive city boundary map that's been up for a couple of years now. It's a really quick way to click on where your property is because let me back up a second, because the address for Gig Harbor, Washington includes such a vast area, not just within the city limits. Our public work staff gets a lot of calls of, you know, can you hook me up to sewer now? Can you hook me up to water now? Well, you're out on the Key Peninsula and that's not an area that we service. Um, and so that the purpose of that mapper was to kind of help provide that contact information in context as to where citizens live. So that was kind of the first little rollout that I did. The Harbors Atlas is the more comprehensive now mapper that is available. And it's going to take just a couple of seconds to load and I ask everybody to just be patient with that. The reason why is we're not just reading data from Gig Harbor. Uh, we have the ability to tie into other publicly available GIS databases. And so there are a couple few layers that are reading from the county and I believe as well as the state. So sometimes it just takes a second to call back and forth. So just have that patience there. Uh, as it comes on, this is called a splash screen and one of basically the purpose of this is just to say, hey, you know, this data is being provided as informational purposes. You really don't rely on it a hundred percent to be absolutely accurate. If you're starting to talk about a matter of, you know, several feet, it's really not meant to do that sort of in-depth work um at this level. So if you're getting down to some really, you know, big discrepancies where things are going to be, you know, potentially you need more clarification. That's just what the splash screen says. So you're just going to agree to the terms and uh, let's go and we'll start going around the city here. So it's going to open up. It's going to have kind of the, just the basic outline of the city of Gig Harbor. The couple tools that are available to you is up in the top left. There's a search menu. Uh, you can search by address and as you start typing, give the wifi just a second, it'll start recommending various addresses that are in here. The other thing, if you're looking for your own parcel or you know your parcel number, you can simply start typing in a parcel number and those will start populating as well. So that's your couple of quick ways to search. You have your zoom in, zoom out buttons on the top left as well as a home button. So if you wanted to just get back to where the map started, just hit the home button, it'll take you right back out. The little uh, symbol below there is for my location is what that little bullseye represents. This is available on any mobile device that you're on, be it a phone or tablet. So it's a little bit cumbersome on such a small screen to get through, but using that my location, if you're somewhere downtown and you wanted to know where the nearest city park was, you could bring up this mapper, click my location, turn on the city park maps or city, yeah, city park layer, and you would be able to see, okay, where's the closest park to where I'm at right now. So that's what that little my, my location button is. You can also use it from your home computer, but you probably know where you're at when you're home. So what we're going to do now is scroll or look at the menu across the bottom. And if you work on this mapper here and you come into city hall to discuss any of the issues or questions that you have with staff, you're going to see the same layout. And so staff is going to be familiar with this uh, as well as you, as you start working with it. Uh, the first button, and I call these menu buttons along the bottom, is for your legend. Your legend is just going to show you what layers you have turned on and off. Uh, the next button is all city layers. This is everything right now that's loaded into the mapper. And like I said, I, I do plan to continue expanding this as we, as we build this out. It's very Gig Harbor focused right now and it's what we wanted to make happen first. So these are all the layers that are currently available in the mapper. So if you're not exactly sure what menu button you can use below, you can use this all layers here. One of the biggest tips in the entire thing is at the top of this menu right here is a little search bar. So if you're looking for zoning and you don't know which layer it's in or which menu it's in, you can just start typing in zoning. It comes up and you can just turn that right on. So off you go. You can always close these menus by clicking the button or clicking the X on the top corner. So we'll just make our way across. I'm not going to run through every single layer that's in there, but it kind of runs from parcel and boundary data information into comprehensive planning is some of our parks and then public works operations as you kind of move left to right. Head through some of the, the community development, which those layers are important for most permit applications throughout the city. So this allows, you know, anyone that's looking to develop a potential parcel or looking to do an addition or something that needs a permit. Those community development layers are where you're going to find things like your height restriction areas. Am I in a historic district or not? What's the land use where I'm at? And all those sorts of things dictate what you're able to do or not be able to do with your property when you're applying for permits. Parks, trails, open space areas, those are in here as well, as long, as well as the Cushman Trail Emergency Markers, which has actually proven to be a pretty big addition that we've done to the trail. And so now as you're starting to head out, you can, you know, look ahead of time, what markers are you going to be at while you're heading out on the trail and maybe let your friends know or at least have an idea. So if something does happen, you know where to call into. Um, there's also going to be more developed, but there's some more kind of tourism layers on here as well. And I hope to develop a full menu for those. But things like waterfront viewing and public water access are in here. And so there's a little area that you can, you know, get a nice little view of the waterfront from various areas as you kind of pan around the map here. You can see the photo locations there. All of the layers that are on here, as you turn them on, have little pop-ups, which is what you just saw. When I click on a layer, it gives me this extra little menu. So that's your pop-up menu. So that's going to, that's going to contain a lot of information for you. As you zoom in, the parcel layer will load up and we'll head up here to city hall. So we can demo that one. And all I'm doing is clicking and dragging the map around. So we'll head on to the city har, city hall parcel and you can click on that and here's this pop-up dialogue now. And so it just kind of gives the basic things of, you know, what your, what your land size is, what that address is. As well as now links to the Pierce County records and Pierce County being the holder of the parcel data. And so you can click on that about my property. It'll take you over to the gig or to the Pierce County website, excuse me. And it'll kind of give you that rundown of, you know, some of the various important things that might be occurring on or around your property. One thing to note, and I want to get a good layer here turned on. I'm going to turn this land use layer on over top of the parcels. One thing to note, when you have multiple layers turned on and you click on that map, take a look at the top of this pop-up dialogue. You can see that it says one of two up here. And there's a little arrow to the right. So first one is it's highlighting the parcel boundary. So that's what that tax parcel is. You hit the little arrow to the right and now it's showing, displaying your land use. So you're in a public and institutional land use category. So that's one of the, one of the quick ways to, to kind of figure out what you're looking at there. We can turn on, you know, additional categories and you would see more pop-up numbers uh, display for you. So again, now you have tax parcels, land use and zoning on. And so you have one, two, and three different pop-ups that are available. So you can see what those are. Go ahead and turn those off. So again, without going through everyone, you can, you can definitely spend your time going through each menu uh, just to see what is available. I am not against expanding and developing and doing more useful things. Um, this is the first iteration. So this is version one. So as you find things that are going to become helpful, Roger's already passed along some of those. Uh, we're going to add it to the list and when we can get those all developed out, we're going to be able to just continue to expand this and making it as useful as possible. What we wanted to do again was keep it very Gig Harbor centric. So we can focus on the things that need to be done to help city business get conducted from a citizen facing side. All right, we'll head into a couple more tools which are past the uh, past the menu buttons. The first one, you can print a map right from here. The key for this one is going to be to center your page about where you might want that map to be. It's set up right now to be in a portrait, which is kind of an up and down eight and a half by 11. You can give your title of a, uh, you can title your map whatever you like. So you can call it a fancy map if you want. And then you can hit your print button and what that's going to do is generate a PDF displaying what is on your, what is on your screen right now. It will also include a legend as well. So if you have multiple, if you have land use and zoning and whatnot turned on, it'll include that down here in the bottom. And so I probably should have shown that to you. Go through this real quick. Any questions so far? We don't need to be really formal if you don't want to be. I'll keep going then. So we'll give that, we'll give for the second fancy map a, a second to produce there. So now again, you'll be able to see centered on the map. And now you have a little legend of what dictates what zoning layers you have turned on there. All right. So we're going to close these out. Let's turn this off. Close these menus. If you need to know any measurements of anything, you can measure an area in square feet. So you can just simply start clicking on the map here. You can also measure distances. So if you need length, you can just choose feet. And you can see it starts to generate as you move your mouse around and then you can just double click to finish that line. And same with area, you can do square feet or acres and you can get kind of an idea of maybe how big your backyard might be, something of that sort. If you get real fancy with it and you understand a little bit of GIS, you can add your own data to this map as well. So if you have things like KMLs or KMZs that work in Google Earth, you can drop that in here. If you have zip folders of actual shape files that come from GIS, you can just drag and drop those files right into the map right here. Or you can go ahead and browse onto your computer. So there's these different file types that this will, or that this program can read and accept. Um, and if you know any shared URLs or shared website links from other agencies, you can also copy and paste that right in there. So if you start getting familiar with GIS and you understand how maybe Fish and Wildlife shares their uh, salmon presence layer, you could copy and paste that link and put it right into here and it'll populate up on the map for you. And I think that is the highlights as we go through. There's a lot more to it than that, but.
That is fantastic. And really quick, I'm going to see if I can remember who did, who raised their hand first. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, that's great. It's super stuff. Question on if you added data, does that just reside on your computer or does that get actually added to our GIS system?
It, it will reside only on your computer. And then you have the ability to go ahead and take that off or as you refresh your browser, that will come off of your data. But yeah, it stays locally.
Great. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. This is really, really exciting. One of the questions that I get a lot and that also I've had sometimes is what's happening here? You know, you're driving by a lot or something like that and you want to know what is going on on that lot can, or on that piece of property. Can we log in to get on the atlas and find out what's happening there? And how would someone do that?
That is actually a mapper that we're working on behind the scenes right now to roll out and it's a uh, it kind of focuses on our larger development projects around the city that would be exactly that, that are visible, that you can see and that questions are probably going to be asked about. And so we just kind of are in the finalizing stages of seeing how we can best roll that out and uh, make that available. And yeah, I would like to, I would like to include that inside of this mapper as well. So you don't have multiple different places to go to.
Okay, great. I look forward to seeing that too. This is wonderful. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood.
Yes, thank you. Great presentation. Thank you so much. Following along, uh, Councilwoman Barber's, you said something about large projects. How large and like if I were walking on Edwards and I saw that ground there, could I go to Edwards and uh, and click on that area and find out what's being, what that project is?
Well, maybe I misspoke. Okay. I shouldn't have said just large. Um, how can I rephrase this? Maybe prominent, large, prominent, same thing.
So is it not every project?
As of right now, not every project is incorporated into this. Um, that's another one that we've been talking about with our permitting system of trying to maybe incorporate those two. At present, I can't get the two to talk very well because they're also GIS based. And so the sharing isn't quite there yet because otherwise we'll be. I'm going to leave it at that. We're not quite there yet.
Okay. Are, are you going to continue to work on that? I think that's really important.
It's something that, yeah, it's something that we're still working on behind the scenes. Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much.
So it's a really good question. Um, council members, the we don't think that everybody would want to know where every deck or every re-roof is going on. And so staffer trying to figure out how to make it useful so that the map isn't inundated with all of the smaller things that you may not want to know or care about. But to be able to indicate where those other projects are. So we will continue to update you on what is decided.
That was the good clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Did, did you want?
I do. I do. Uh, you know, neighbors might want to know what's going on with decks and roofs because that might say something to them about the height if somebody is remodeling. So just neighbors might want to know. Thank you.
We will look into that. And again, as Mike said, he's looking to see how SmartGov can marry with the GIS system that Mike has created. And as he indicated, this is kind of mapper number one, which is, I want to give kudos to Mike and to Jeff for supporting Mike and all of this. Three years ago, we did not have a GIS system for the city. And we contracted with the county for our GIS needs. And so being able to have a mapper that's focused on Gig Harbor and gives all the data to um, the folks that live here is an amazing service. And Mike um, has done a really fabulous job with ensuring that this is accessible to anyone who visits our website. So as he said, any comments that you have or suggestions, feel free to send those along to Mike and we will work as hard as we can to get those incorporated.
Thanks. And you know, it's easy to operate as well. I think our citizens, it's easy. I mean, I've been on it. So
Good.
If I can get on it and walk around and, and make it work, I think our citizens.
Yeah, no, that, no. And that's great feedback to hear. That's, that's exactly what I want to know because if it, if it's too cumbersome and too overloading, then I, I want to know that now. So it's good that it's easy to get around. Yeah. Good. Good, good.
Great. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you. I mean, this is incredible. This is really great work. Excited for everybody. Just a few questions of how often is the system being updated? So just on anything like we just spoke about, maybe they're the, we'll use a deck analogy is getting built or something like that. How often would something like that be updated?
Most of our data is actually live time. So that, that would be something that I can't speak to the projects yet. Sorry. Because we're not sure how that's going to go. But for instance, on here, uh, we, you can find our catch basin layer for our stormwater. And so part of, part of my task over the coming year or two now is going to be to bring all of those into a little bit more accurate alignment. And so we don't have, you know, there might be catch basins right now that show in people's front yards. And that's just not true. It's on the side of the curb. And so we need to, you know, get in there and straighten those sorts of details out. And so when I make that change, I would do that in the field. And when I hit save, it trickles down through every mapper within a minute or so. So some of it is very live and instantaneous. Something like zoning and land use will be updated as you pass ordinances and change certain areas and things of that sort. But do rest assured, the one, the one good thing to know is behind the scenes, it's all of the data is reading from the same databases. And so the land use that you see is the same land use layer that staff is using. So there's nothing that staff can really see that you can't, in a sense, if you will. Um, so as those changes are made, you know, we're, we're all seeing the same thing together.
Great thing. And just uh, two more follow-up questions. So because this is such a great tool, how are we going to communicate it when you're ready to kind of go live for the broader audience, if you will? And then secondly, if you'll have a governance process around the tool and how the tool is to be used and what it's supposed to be used for and what it's not to be. And I'm not saying we should debate that here today. Just curious how that's going to be developed.
Yeah, I, I am working on a general standard operating procedures for GIS. Uh, we do have a legal disclaimer that does go along with this mapper. So that's already in place. It's been reviewed by Daniel and we're, we're good to go on that. And so, you know, we're kind of taking those steps to, to make sure that we are protected in the way that we use it. It's live now and available via the website. So I don't know if we needed more major announcement or something, social media type. I don't know.
It's a great question. I know we've included it in the gigabyte, but I think that potentially more on that as well as, as we're going out to community groups, the Chamber Downtown Waterfront Alliance, meeting with the school district, we can get it out that way. And you know, homeowners associations, that type of thing, be able to roll it out and show people how to use it. Uh, because sometimes talking about it isn't as exciting as Mike coming and showing you how it works.
Great questions, Council. Thank you so much. And Mike, thank you so much. And Jeff, thank you for supporting Mike in this. This is really, as, as Council said, this is amazing and a, and a really great service to the community, which lines up with our, one of our strategic goals and providing great services from the city to our residents. So just really appreciate. lines up with our, one of our strategic goals and providing great services from the city to our residents. So just really appreciate all your work on this very much.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the mayor's report, it is always an honor for me to go out and speak to our community. And I was honored to speak at the morning Rotary on Friday morning and give a state of the city update. And I want to thank them. It's great to see what all of our local clubs are doing, whether it's Kiwanis, Lions, Rotary. They are all doing such phenomenal things in and around our city. And so I'm, I'm so grateful. Oh, thank you for pulling this up. So they are doing a really beautiful landscape plan for our Willatchit interchange. And we are, they're working with Washington Department of Transportation and with the city to just really, they're going to plant some beautiful native trees and shrubs and lots of places for birds and, and be able to have some, just, just some beautification there, which is going to be so nice. And will complement our hopefully upcoming Willatchit interchange project, if we can ever get funding for that hint, hint legislature. Anyway, moving on from that, just really grateful. They were there Saturday doing mowing and digging all the holes for the trees and just working very hard to make that, make the entrance to our city beautiful. So thank you Rotary for that. And then that leads into thanking our Public Works team for beautifying both of our entrances to the city. The Welcome to Gig Harbor signs with all of our different seals on there. There's beauty bark that's been added. They're all weeded and mowed around there and at Borgan and at Willatchit. And it just looks really, really nice. So thank you to Public Works for also doing that. It's, it's, it's just nice to have that so clean and nice when you're coming into town. So thank you, Public Works. And I'll turn it over to our city administrator Katrina Knutson for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. A very brief legislative update. As you know, the session has begun and we're continuing to monitor several pressing bills that are, that you've asked us to look at in our legislative document. Number, the first one that I will speak to is Senate Bill 1110, which is regarding missing middle housing. This bill essentially for any city over 6,000 in population would be required to allow up to four plexes on each single family lot. And so this would apply to the city. There are a number of issues that we've identified with that as council has in the legislative document. On Friday, I was asked to sit with Representative Bateman on a call with AWC, other city administrators, where we discussed several issues with the, with the bill as it's currently drafted and made several suggestions to include the missing middle requirements, potentially going to cities over 20,000 or where they're near Bus Rapid Transit. So along I-5 or along where the, the sounder, sounder train is or the Link Light Rail. This would have, if passed, would have a drastic impact on the capacity for development within the city. And would require us, require us to redo the buildable lands report and have pretty drastic landage changes in our upcoming comprehensive plan. I will be going down to Olympia on Wednesday testifying to the Senate Committee regarding this bill requesting to, requesting these changes and we'll report back to you on that after that happens. We're also monitoring two bills regarding police. Policing, one is Senate Bill 5467 regarding the Blake decision. And this is a bipartisan bill that addresses corrections needed to compassionately and firmly to go with escalating drug possession crimes within our state. The city is signed in and support of that bill and we're working with our legislative delegation to ensure support on that as well. Additionally, Senate Bill and House Bill 1363 regarding pursuits. That bill would allow additional pursuit opportunity for our police officers in, in pursuing crime. Some, one other bill or two other bills, excuse me, House Bill 1073. That bill was entered and that would have prohibited urban forest management plans from would have prevented them from requiring or allowing tree retention on plots and short plots. That bill we've heard from our lobbyists will not make it out of committee. And so that is one that we will stop monitoring for, for the time being. One other bill to make you aware of was regarding a design review boards. The bill was entered to not allow design review boards to review residential projects in their entirety. It appears that that bill will move out of the House Committee and into the House. With, we've asked for an amendment to allow for historic residences to be reviewed by the design review board. And it appears that that recommendation has support. So we do anticipate that, that caveat being added to the bill prior to adoption. This Wednesday as well, the mayor will be meeting with Senator Randall at the same time that I'm testifying to the Senate Committee and the mayor will be discussing our transportation requests as well as a request, capital request for the sports complex. And similar meetings with Representative Hutchins and Calder will take place on January 30th, where we will be talking about Willatchit and the sports complex, et cetera. And thank you, Council. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Otherwise, after these events, we'll let you know if any movement happens and how you can be further involved. Let's see. Second on my list of three is the sports complex naming discussion. You, there's been a topic added to your February 9th council meeting regarding potential naming opportunity for some significant funds to the sports complex project. So that has been added on. The YMCA will be there and we're looking for policy direction from the council on how to proceed with accepting or not accepting of what will be requested of the council in terms of contract amendment that may, may be needed for this naming opportunity. And that packet will be up on the Thursday prior to that meeting. And lastly, you may have noticed that there's a ballot drop box out front now. So we are now a ballot location for voting day here. And I believe it has been moved from the fire department. So we will be working to get that word out along with Pierce County. The next time that there is a ballot to be dropped off, they will be happening out here on our very own property, which seems very fitting. That concludes my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Lots of good things going on. I will now open up the public comment period for non-agenda items. So anything that is not listed on our agenda tonight. And if you are, wish, if you wish to speak, you can come forward and state your name, full name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone that is in the audience tonight that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay. For our online audience, welcome to you as well. Thank you for joining us tonight. You can either push the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom screen, or you can push star nine on your phone. And the same applies. You can state your name and you'll have three minutes as well. And I'm not seeing hands raised. Making sure I'm not missing anybody. Okay.
No raised hands.
No raised hands. All right. Well, then we will, we will close public comment on non-agenda items and go straight into our new business item number one, which is Resolution 1269, expressing support for Peninsula School District propositions one and two. The suggested motion is to move to approve Resolution 1269. And our report tonight comes from our city clerk, Josh Sticker.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Just to introduce this resolution very quickly. There are currently two ballot measures for levies placed by the school district on the February 14th ballot. The city and the city council officially can only take a position on levies by adopting a resolution, which is what we're here to do tonight. A draft resolution of support has been placed in front of you and we will open up the floor for presentation and comments. The school district is here with several of its representatives, including Superintendent Barr, to introduce the two levies. And then we'll open it up for public comment as well. Just a quick note that by state law, we are required to provide equal opportunity for both proponents and opponents of the levies. So if there are any people here that wish to comment in opposition to the levies, we'll give them equal time to whatever the school district is planning to use tonight. So with that, I hand it over to Council for clarifying questions and then we can open it up for the presentation.
Any clarifying questions about the process from Council? Okay, not seeing any lights. So we will open up for, with the presentation by Superintendent Creston Barr. You can come forward and your, and your team, whoever you'd like to bring with you and introduce for us. Thank you for being here this evening.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you for having us in person. I've only seen you on Zoom. So thank you for having us. Mayor Muteley and council members, we're very honored to be here to give information on our two propositions. And behind me, I have John Yellowlee's Assistant Superintendent of Special Services. Chris Hagel is our Executive Director for all things technology and innovation and Ashley Murphy, my new CFO this year. So we have a presentation for you. And then we are available for any questions. So thank you for having us. Last year, we engaged our community, just like you, as well as you're thinking about your goals and your strategic plan. And so we want to thank the community for coming out. We had close to 20,000 responses on our online thought exchange. So we listened to our community and we had an opportunity to work with our board to really incorporate the best of what we heard about children. And so what you see in front of us today is our mission to be the best school district in the state, preparing every child to be successfully globally and providing and having that responsibility to provide innovative, rigorous programs set within a culture of belonging. And I must say that the process was very interesting because we have, if you look at our strategic plan online, one interesting value that I just always like to highlight is that we commit to our community of Gig Harbor and Key Peninsula students to provide them the opportunity every day to have curiosity, experimental imagination and a sense of wonder. And so go ahead, Chris. And so we stand here before you just as a quick reminder that several years ago in 2019, the capital projects that was promised to this community was to rebuild or replace and build four new elementary schools in six years. And what Peninsula School District has delivered is four new elementary schools plus two additional modernized middle schools that if you walk through them, they are completely remodeled. So they look brand new and they are in the process right now. They're right in the middle of building, which is so fun. And I know that you understand that as well. But in four years, so promised four in six years and delivered six in four years. And I'm very proud of that team. And so just a few things, I know that I had met with you last year for the proposition of the sister cities and we have really, really been busy. So just a few highlights. Peninsula Reads, and I know the Herons key team behind us, they are doing that this month with our Swiftwater students, but we launched that in October to read to student and to bring books to get all of our students up to their third grade reading. We know that that makes an impact. Our NJROTC program, we have had three schools step forward to get grants in arts. We have had professional development, but really an arts focus, both performing and visual. STEM lighthouse grants, we have the state of Washington as a recognized pioneer and Evergreen Elementary as exemplary lighthouse schools, but they also received $30,000 each last year. And we have three of our schools as Washington State Green Leader Awards. And we submitted last week, maybe two weeks ago to become green leaders for the nation. And so for the Department of Education. So we're waiting on that. Go ahead, Chris. And then early learning, I know that we had a conversation and we showed pictures of Norway and having that sister city. And we launched it in November. We're really, really proud of those programs, all of our programs, transitional kindergarten. We do have them at five schools. That is state funded and there is some legislative action about narrowing that. So just know that we will be advocating for that. Our outdoor preschools based on our Berna Hagen idea. And our, our conversations with Norway are at Voyager and Evergreen Elementary. And we'd love to invite you at a later date. If you ever wish to tour, it really is a joy. So on the ballot on February 14th, so it sounds like you have a ballot out there. It'll be great Valentine's Day. We have two propositions. First are replacement EPNO levy, and you'll hear about that. And proposition two, which is our safety, security and technology levy that you will hear from Chris, but it is a direct response to what we heard from our community in terms of our strategic plan. It was the number one thing that we heard from families. Go ahead. We're going to skip this, but if you wish to see our video, it's really great. It's really great. All right. Go ahead, John.
Thank you. And thank you for having us here this evening. I'm going to share a little bit about our replacement educational programs and operations levy. So as you can see here, this is a replacement levy that accounts for 18% of the overall district budget. It maintains many of the quality programs that we have at all of our schools and supports staff and student resources that are not fully funded by the state. Just a few examples, you can see on the screen here are nurses and counselors, educators, specialists, many of our special education staff are supported by the levy, athletics and sports teams, after school clubs, arts and music, transportation, many of the early learning programs that Superintendent Barr just referenced are highly capable programming and preventative maintenance. And the next slide here is a visual and some of those staff groups, you can see here what the state funds and what our levy funds. As you can see, this first group, our school nurses, the state funds 4.88 nurses and the levy funds the other 3.5 in addition to health techs at all 17 of our schools. The state funds 20.7 of our counselors and the levy funds the other 11. The state funds not even a full-time school psychologist. So basically three days a week of a school psychologist and the levy funds the other 11.4. And the state funds 0% for athletics. So our levy funds 100% of our athletics in our schools. And the next slide is just a few pictures, a few visuals of some of those programs. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris for the safety, security and technology level.
Thank you. So as Superintendent Barr mentioned, when we did our strategic plan last year, the top priority for all of our, in all of that strategic plan work was to keep our kids safe at school. Unfortunately for us, as you can see, the state gives us $0 to do that. And so we, the board has made a decision to go out and ask the community to create a dedicated funding stream for safety, security and technology projects throughout our district. Some of these things, what they look like is like secure access control. So badge control into our schools. Our elementary schools, we've done for years. We've had all of our doors secured that way. Our middle schools only have one door, one door in each building. And then our high schools, we just in the last few weeks have turned on three or four doors. But if you've ever been to either Gig Harbor or Peninsula High School, you know, they have 30, 40, 50 doors and only a couple of them are automatically secured right now. Security cameras, kind of the same thing. If you were to build a brand new high school today, you'd put in 200, 250 cameras. Our high schools both have around 40 to 50 cameras. And so we need to expand that in all of our buildings. Cybersecurity is a big one. Unfortunately, K-12 education is one of the top targets in the country for cyber attacks. We get a little bit of help, not financial, but just information services from Homeland Security and the FBI. But we need dedicated funding to do a better job of keeping all of our digital assets safe and our student information. Emergency communication systems, we, all of our buildings have alert systems and paging systems. And some of those in some of our older schools are getting to be 30 years old. And so this would help update some of those and bring them up to current standards. This levy also funds student and staff devices and classroom instructional equipment. You can see some of those here. All of our new schools get these interactive touchscreen in displays in the classrooms. We need to bring those to all of our schools. And so the ones that we've been able to fund with the class, with the bond, the capital bond, those have those, but we need to get them into the rest of our classrooms. Levy also would fund replacement cycles for student and staff devices. So all of our students get a device. And so that's the safety and security and technology levy.
Okay. So financial overview. So most of the time when we give this presentation, people hear what it is we're going out for. And they're like, well, yes, we agree. We should keep our, our students and staff safe and secure. And yes, technology is part of the 21st century, but what it comes down to is the money. What's this going to cost us as a taxpayer? So that's where I come in. So with our two propositions, our replacement education and operations levy, we're putting this on a ballot for a term of three years. In the first year, we would be collecting 27 million. Second year, just over 28 million. And in the third year, just over 29 million. In the first year, we would be collecting 27 million, second year, just over 28 million, and in the third year, just over 29 million. In the first year, this equates to a tax rate of approximately $1.13 per thousand of assessed value based upon our estimates that went into these calculations. Now, we can't collect more than the dollar value on the ballot. And so if our estimate was conservative, which is where we like to be, then that dollar rate actually goes down. On our safety, security, and technology levy, this is a proposition that we can put on the ballot actually for six years. And so that is what we are doing. The first year, we'd be collecting at 6 million even. And then each year, it would incrementally increase until in the sixth and final year, we'd be collecting just under $7 million. This is to keep up with the costs of technology. And even on the safety and security side, a lot of those pieces are technology related. And as we know, those costs increase each year. The estimated rate would be approximately 25 cents per thousand of assessed value for each of the six years based upon our estimates. So together, both of these levies are really providing the needed funding that we need to continue our programs and our staffing at the levels that we have currently, but also help drive our safety, security, and technology piece further that we heard in the strategic plan, which is a priority for our community. So when we start looking at what does this mean as far as actual dollars go? So our local school tax rates are calculated by combining both your local levy and your bond rate. So in calendar year 2022, based upon that chart that you can see there, taxpayers were paying approximately $2.01 per thousand of assessed value. Based upon what we are putting on the ballot and what we are proposing, in calendar year 2024, taxpayers would actually be paying less than what they paid in calendar year 2022. That total combined value would come down to $1.82 per thousand of assessed value. So for homeowners of a $500,000 home, in 2022, they would have been paying $1,005 over the course of a year for the levies at $2.01 per thousand. In 2024, it would go down to $910 total over the course of the year at that $1.82 per thousand. So that's what we have. At this point, are there any questions?
Any questions from council? Okay, not seeing any right now. We'll go ahead and thank you so much. Stick around in case there are
We will stick
questions at the end of, end of the council deliberation here. But I want to open it up to anyone else that would like to give public comment on this agenda item. So is there, if there is anyone in the audience tonight, you can come forward to give public comment. Okay, not seeing any online tonight. If you would like to comment on this agenda item, you can raise your, push the raise hand button or star nine on your phone. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Oh, oh, I see lights now. Not seeing any raised hands. So I will close the public comment on this agenda item and move on to council deliberation and action. And Councilmember Wood, you are up first.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for taking care of our kids, for educating them. Thank you for keeping them safe. So I move to approve Resolution 1269.
Second.
I'd second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Barber. Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thanks. Just wanted to add some thanks to this as well. Appreciate the presentation. Growing up here and not having levies passing when I was a teenager was really disheartening and not feeling supported by your community. So I absolutely support this, and thank you.
All right. I don't see any other comments from council, but for me too, as a mother of a child in Peninsula School District, and also growing up in the district, I really appreciate all the hard work that has been put into your strategic strategic plan, all that you've been doing around safety and security, and it really, it's so important. So it's very much appreciated. And with that, we have a motion. We have a second. I don't see any other lights. Councilmember Liggins, I see you, and I now finally do see you on the screen. Did you have anything you wanted to add? No, okay.
No, I'm fine. Thanks. I just turned on my camera for the vote. So thanks.
Oh, thank you. Okay, that that helps me. Then I don't forget that you're there. And I can't see your hand raised very well. All right, so I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, council, and thank you all again for being here with us tonight. All right. Moving, unless there's a request for a break from council, we'll just keep going. You guys want to keep going? Okay, so moving on to item number two is our deferred COVID-19 payment program. And the suggested motion is to move to adopt the proposed deferred COVID-19 payment program. This report comes to us from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langhale.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As you recall, we had a study session on January 12th about the same topic. So it's probably fresh in your mind. But just as a reminder, this is a proposed repayment plan as in its response to the COVID-19 emergency proclamation that the city enacted in March of 2020. At that time, the city water and sewer utility counts were halted for any delinquencies and suspensions of penalties interest. Once the emergency proclamation was adopted, it had been in effect until December of last year. That's when Resolution 1276 was enacted, ending the emergency proclamation. And thereby, in the original proclamation, it identified that six months after the emergency had deemed that it was over, that the delinquencies and interest payments would resume. So that's where we are today. We're preparing to reimpose, as of June of 2023, both utility delinquencies and penalties. So at the January 12th study session, we presented some options and some a plan for this that city staff have provided. That included a proposed payment plan and a customer support procedures. All of those, I think, are were included in your packet tonight. I'm gonna share with you quickly just that timeline referring to earlier. It shows all the way from March of 2020. That's in the past until today, anticipated June, January 23rd, the adoption of the repayment program. And then we are gonna be moving forward with, if it's adopted tonight, notices will be sent to those who are behind on their payments. And the plan, including the framework for the plans themselves, which I'll bring up on screen here in just a moment. The applications for the plan are due to the city June 9th. We will be going through what was submitted. And anyone who didn't submit a payment plan but still has a delinquency as of June 12th, 2023, we will then begin enacting, or moving them into the status of being delinquent. And then interest would begin being charged at that point. And then, like we said last time, we're gonna start a shut off list by early July. So I'm gonna pause real quick. I'm gonna switch over to what the application looks like, just so you're all familiar with it. And anyone who's watching could see this also. This is what the form looks like. It's a pretty simple form. It essentially has a bunch of Linga language around it, asks for your name and contact information, and you get to choose which option you want. It depends on the past due amount. You can have four, eight, 12, 16, 20 months to pay respective to the amount that's past due. So one of the items that we did here from council last time was is staff preparing to have any other considerations made for additional funding for those customers who might be in dire need for support? And we can't, we catastrophic if their water's turned off because they can't pay for it. So we have been looking, I've talked to city attorney, I've talked to the finance director. We're putting together some plans on how to proceed with other ways to support those that are able to show that they're in a dire financial state. So we'll be coming to council later this early in spring, hopefully, with those proposals. Definitely in time before we hit any of these June timeframes. Just a reminder that as of January 1st, the total amount we had due to those utilities is about $144,000. That spanned over across 274 customer accounts. That math works out to an average amount due of $526 per customer. So that's my report. I'm happy to answer any of the questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Or excuse me, Director Langhale. Councilmember Wood?
Thank you, Director Langhale. Thank you so much for working on that and having a conversation about those folks who really need financial help. I know that there was some concern about perhaps coordinating with the FISH. Is any conversation taking place there, or?
What we, we haven't established a framework for what that might look like. But yes, we've had some internal discussions of what that could look like.
Okay, great. And while this is not part of this particular ordinance, I just want to thank the billing staff because they, during our study session, they made it very clear to us. Not only do they do a good job, but it's not easy to call folks and let them know that their bill is in arrears. And and for our public work staff, it's, it's not easy for them to go out and turn off services. So those folks deserve a special thank you, I think. So Jeff, thanks. Director Langhale, thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Jeff, you might mention some of the work that the city has done to help seniors over the age of 62 that find themselves in that need. So would you like to explain that?
Definitely. So yes, we have, we have code that says that we can provide discounts 50% off the rates for all of our utilities for low income seniors. That's been in code, but we have recently been publishing that discount, both directly indirect mailers in utility bills and on our website. So we've been reinforcing that, trying to get the word out to more people so that they're very aware of that. Because previously, we just had very few people applying for those discounted rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. I don't see any other lights on right now for councils, so I will open up the public comment on this agenda item. If you have something that you would like to say, then come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes. Anyone in the audience tonight wish to speak on this agenda item? Okay, anyone in our online audience that wishes to speak? Reminder, you can push the star raise hand button or star nine on your phone. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment on this agenda item and open it up for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Rodenberg.
I'd like to move that we adopt the proposal for deferred COVID-19 payment program.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Starset. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, council. So moving on to our third agenda item is our inter-agency agreement with the Department of Enterprise Services for HVAC system. And the suggested motion is to move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services for work associated with the Civic Center HVAC upgrade. And this report is also from our Public Works Director, Jeff Langhale.
Thank you, Mayor. In June of last year, the city hired McDonald Miller to assess our aging HVAC system, HVAC, heating, air conditioning, ventilation system. It was originally installed more than 20 years ago when the building was constructed. And so for a 15-year lifespan, we've done pretty well with this system, but it's definitely time to replace it. At the November 17th study session, we brought in McDonald Miller. They provided a report. I'm going to just share on the screen a quick summary of that report. They provided us an analysis of various types of systems that we could use to replace our existing HVAC system. We had some pretty specific criteria when we moved forward with this. And they gave us three options here, system A, B, and C. At the November 17th study session, council provided direction for staff to proceed with installing system A. That allowed us to make sure that we had enough money in the budget to provide for that system in the 2324 budget. So we proceeded to go ahead and move forward since that was adopting the budget with the, so what should be sufficient funding. The next step in this process is to enter into an agreement with Department of Enterprise Services through their energy program that would allow the city to work directly with an energy service company such as McDonald Miller to develop an energy services proposal. And that would take us into the future with having direct contracting with them. And instead of having to delay design permitting and then bidding and then acquisition of materials, we can go at it in a much different approach. So this agreement you have before you tonight would provide the framework for us to move forward. It doesn't require us to spend money. That's going to come shortly after. If this agreement is approved, we will be looking to spend some money in connection with the budgeted amount to enter into a energy services proposal. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Great, thank you so much. Any clarifying questions from council on this agenda item? Councilmember Martin.
Thank you for that. Just question on the, we're going through an ESCO plan, is that right?
Yes, Energy Services Company.
So curious as to are there rebates for different systems? And was that calculated in the cost that was presented?
Well, that cost was cost for construction installation. We are going to be, that's gonna be the next step, is the rebates and other criteria that we're gonna set with McDonald Miller in the near future. And that's going, that's the next step in the process. So we don't have that identified yet.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Not seeing any other questions from council, so I will open up public comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak tonight on this? Okay, our online audience, if you'd like to speak on this, you can raise your hand on the raise hand button or star nine on your phone. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment on this agenda item and move toward council deliberation and action. Councilmember Barber.
Yes, I move to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an inter-agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services for work associated with the Civic Center HVAC upgrade.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes 7-0. Thank you, council. And our final agenda item tonight is the election of our mayor pro temp. Suggested motion is to nominate Councilmember Link for the Office of Mayor Pro Temp. And this report comes to us from our city clerk, Josh Stecker.
Thank you again, Mayor. So in accordance with Gig Harbor Municipal Code, Chapter 2.14, the second regular council meeting of each year, the city council is required to elect from their number someone for the position of mayor pro temp. The process for this, we're gonna go by what is the standard method for nominations and elections in Robert's Rules of Order. It is to open the floor for nominations from any of the council members. So council members can nominate any other council member. Nominations do not require a second. So once someone is nominated, then their name is put forward for the role of mayor pro temp. Once all nominations have been completed, then the council can deliberate on those nominations if they choose, or the mayor can call a roll call vote. And then we will do a roll call vote for those that are nominated. And the first nominee to receive four votes will be elected to mayor pro temp. So if there are any questions on procedure, I'm happy to.
So if there are any questions on procedure, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, the process would be for council to begin nominations.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember Look.
Yes, I nominate Brenda like Councilwoman Brenda Lycans for the Office of Mayor Pro Temp.
Okay. Councilmember Starset.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I nominate Councilmember Rodenberg for the Office of Mayor Pro Temp or I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, I don't see any other lights. So our nominees are Councilmember Lycans and Councilmember Rodenberg. If there is nothing else from council, I don't see any. We will open up public comment on this agenda item. Anyone in the audience wish to speak tonight? Okay, anyone on our online watching online that would like to speak, you can press star nine or the raise hand button on your screen. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And I will do a roll call vote from my far left. Councilmember Look.
Yes, Councilwoman Lycans.
Okay, and I'm keeping track here. I'm taking notes. Councilmember Starset.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Councilmember Lycans.
Councilmember Lycans.
Councilmember Henderson.
Councilmember Lycans.
Councilmember Martin.
Councilmember Lycans.
Councilmember Barber.
Councilmember Lycans.
Okay, so we have a vote of five to two for Councilmember Lycans. Congratulations, Councilmember Lycans. You are mayor pro tempore.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words? You certainly don't have to. I know you're not feeling.
I'm not feeling great, but just really quickly, I appreciate the nomination. This wasn't even necessarily on my radar, but I'm honored to serve. And I appreciate it. And I really appreciate everyone on this council. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to our staff report, our quarterly budget report. And this will come from our city administrator Katrina Knutson in place of our finance director this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Again, I will try make this short. Finance Director Dave Rodenbach cannot be with us this evening. He will give you a much more in-depth discussion of the budget when he returns at one of your meetings. But until then, I will briefly go over this with you and hit some of the highlights. Within the agenda packet, you should have received all of the attachments for the documents that staff goes through in terms of if they're going to be meeting an objective, how far along they are in that objective percentage wise, and then any notes as to whether or not we're meeting the target or not meeting the target and why. So I won't go into those specifically this evening. However, if there are questions, we're happy to answer that. I believe Director Langham, DC and DCS are still here. So if there's questions about those, happy to go into those. However, for tonight, just wanted to give a very high-level description of the two thousand twenty-two budget. Let me try to hide this for myself. I can see. Thank you. Okay. So we're very fortunate in the city to have a wonderful finance team led by Finance Director Dave Rodenbach. He regularly comes in very make sure that we have adequate revenues for our expenditures and this year is not an outlier of that. We are we're well within plan. So that is good news. And I'll just go through some of those for you. In terms of general fund revenues, you can see here at the bottom, they are we're ninety-eight percent of our general fund revenue. So that is really great. I will note that we won't have our final sales tax numbers until sometime in late February, and so we will have completed two thousand twenty-two numbers for you sometime in March. So that ninety-eight percent of anticipated revenues may go to ninety-nine percent, not quite sure yet. So some of those sales tax, you can see that we've steadily increased since two thousand seventeen. That's the last number that he's provided for us on here. We're at ninety-five percent for our budget for two thousand twenty-two. Again, we're expecting that to go up just a little bit more, but as of close of the year of the end of two thousand twenty-two, that's where we are. In two thousand twenty-two, we collected nearly nine million dollars of sales tax. And again, that's a a slow but steady increase since two thousand seventeen. Looking at property tax revenue, we're pretty steady ever since two thousand nineteen. We're looking at about three point two million dollars in property tax annually coming in. And Dave was almost spot on with property tax. So kudos to Dave on that, helping us project those numbers. Within the Transportation Benefit District, again, recall that this has been in place since two thousand twenty. We, the fourth quarter, shows that we have a two thousand twenty-two revenue of two million one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. So that is again for transportation projects that are identified on the TBD document that Jeff and his team, excuse me, Director Langham and his team are working to get all of those transportation projects completed for our infrastructure plan. And our total TBD resources currently are five million, around five point one million dollars, which quite a bit of that money will be spent toward transportation projects, which it's intended to within our next biennial budget. So again, the idea is to take in this tax and spend the tax within a period of time to ensure that we're keeping up with our transportation needs. One of our other larger contributors to the general fund is building permit fee revenue. And this is something that we're going to want to keep an eye on. You can see that we had a high of approximately one point seven million dollars in two thousand seventeen. And that is dipped down to about eight hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars in two thousand twenty-two. This was anticipated.
Oh. Got a question from Councilmember Henderson.
Okay, I'll stop.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you remember or do you recall what drove that large increase in two thousand twenty-one? What was it, a one specific project or just all mess of general ones, small ones?
Are you speaking of building permit?
Yes, correct.
Two thousand twenty-one, look to Carl, but that was the a lot of the Platts, Harbor Hill Platts were completing McCormick Creek, North Creek. So we had a lot of residential development that was driving that increase. And since those homes have been since developed and now occupied, we're not having the replenishment of single-family residences in the pipeline that are driving that larger building permit revenue. I've asked Director DCS and his team to put together a pipeline document post work session where at least one council member asked how what is a development in the pipeline left over. And so they're actively working on that and we'll be able to share that with council when that's complete. But this is one of the revenue items that we're going to want to keep an eye on, and we did plan for a decrease in the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget. So this is not unanticipated, but we will want to watch it in terms of potential staffing levels there. Now, in terms of general fund expenditures, you can see here at the bottom, we have expended eighty-three percent of our total general fund that we were expecting to expend in two thousand twenty-two. And some of those projects that Jeff and his team that could not move forward due to permitting reasons or things like that is the reason that that is at eighty-three percent. Those projects through the budget process, Public Works worked to put into the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. So some of this is kind of moving from one year to the next, and Dave has carefully made sure that that is done legally through the budget process. Now getting into water sewer storm. Just again, brief highlights here. You can see in the blue, or maybe you can't try to. Okay, maybe that'll work. In the blue are estimated revenues. And in the red are are actual revenues. And you can see for water and sewer, those two pretty much align very well along what we expected to expend as well as storm. Sorry, now I can't see. I'm showing you. In terms of expenditures, you can see that in the blue on the water side, we're eighty-one percent of what we anticipated to expand sewer eighty-four percent. And then stormwater, we're only at thirty-four percent of what we expected to expand. Now again, that will that will shift over the next two years as we focus on more stormwater projects. But this is at the the complete year to date. The remainder of this document that's included in your packet talks about the city's composition of cash and investments. I won't go too far into that, but if you're interested, Dave and his team have done a really great job of ensuring that we are well-invested with adequate cash on hand to handle all of our expenditures. And then within the remaining portion of this document is all of the information that you might not want to know or dive into the weeds. But it does go into all of our different funds and what we began with, what our revenues were and how we expended that. So if you're curious to go through and see what a particular fund did during the year in lieu of this general information, it is all there available for you at your fingertips. And with that, I will answer any questions that I can. If not, I will take questions and have Dave respond to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Look.
City Administrator Knutson, that was a great report. Thank you so much for doing that. And to our department heads who complete the budget, the quarterly budget report. Thank you so much because you answer all my questions. I usually have some, but I don't have any this time because they're found in the notes. And it is so nice because when I have a citizen ask me about something, if I don't have an answer, I can generally go to these notes and find out why something's not getting done and hasn't been moved to the next year. It's just really handy and efficient. And and I'm I thank you so much for this report. So kudos to everybody involved. Thanks.
And I believe there's a special shout out to Assistant City Clerk Tiffany Element for the notes.
Thank you for that reminder. We definitely want Josh handed that off to Tiffany Alment, and she has done an excellent job compiling all of those and ensuring that timely responses are had from our department directors who were very busy on many other things. So special shout out to Tiffany. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tiffany. Councilmember Martin.
Yes, I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Look was saying. I've seen a lot of budgets in my time, more than I want to admit to. It's really phenomenal. And the document that I was given when I first started with this next biennial budget, it was really impressive, gave a great outlook as to what's currently being done, what we're looking at doing in the future. So you can track why we would request funding for something because the plans are all there from the wonderful staff. So I really do think, I mean, it's easy to read. It's very clear. It's articulate. And I know there's a lot of state oversight on city budgets and how you present those and all that. So thank you to everyone for that. Really impressive and to be able to dive in and understand all that and be the wonk that wants to read the details. I appreciate it.
Yes, and Director Rodenbach doesn't often talk about just how much work goes into keeping this above honest and above board and and great clean audits. We have clean audits every time. And so really proud of our finance team for crossing every T, dotting every I. They just really do a great job to ensure that the city's in compliance and tracking along with our with our finances. So great, great job. Thank you, Katrina, for stepping stepping in and doing such an amazing job. And my apologies, council. I meant to give you guys a chance to talk when and say comments on the proclamations tonight, and it just flew over my head. And then I saw Mary leaving and went, I forgot to give counsel a chance to say. So I'm sorry, if you would like to say anything on the record for her now, she can come back and watch it, but I apologize. So I will open up council comments. You don't have to, but I just remember, I just realized and wanted to say I didn't mean to forget about you giving comments for Mary and and Black History Month, if you so chose to do so. Anyway, my apologies for that oversight. And so I'll open it up. Councilmember Barber.
Yes, thank you. First, I wanted to apologize for being on my cell phone. I got a message on my watch that a good friend of mine had died. It turns out that he was hacked on Facebook. So if you get a message from a friend that says they were in an accident, they may not have been. But that's why I left. I was a little shocked and then had he was a newscaster. So there were a lot of people texting. So I apologize. I know I shouldn't have, but keep an eye on your social media, please.
Good reminder for us all.
Yes. So I also want to commend the students of Voyager Elementary School. I saw this on or Brenda saw it, actually Councilmember Lycans, I'm sorry, saw this on Instagram today. It evidently is Greater Kindness Week. And the students at Voyager Elementary School painted hearts that are on the windows down at tickled pink. So if you see any students from Voyager, please tell them how wonderful they are for spreading kindness this week. And remember to spread your own kindness.
Thank you, Councilmember Look.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last Thursday, January the nineteenth, was a Pierce County Regional Council meeting. And we had a presentation. I represent the city on that on that board. We had a presentation from Senator Patty Murray's office. Two of her advisors were there, and I gave that information to our city administrator. They encouraged cities, Councilmember Senator Murray's office encouraged cities to contact Senator Murray's office with any large transportation funding needs coming up in the next five years. They also shared that there is a billion dollars, billion dollars available for from FEMA for emergency planning. So if we need some of that. And also, one of our other presenters was supportive Tacoma Commissioner Keller. Keller, who announced the hundred thousand grant will be given to a third party for paid memberships. And as City Administrator Knutson and I were talking, and we'll try to get more information if we can do anything from the city. But basically Gig Harbor residents have the ability to apply for these internships under a third party, which is goodwill. I thought about FISH, but then I didn't know that they did any any hiring of kids or had anything like that. And I thought about Harbor Hope. But Commissioner Keller sits on the Board of Harbor Hope, and I think their age only goes up to eighteen. So if anyone knows of any nonprofits that work with trying to get jobs for kids over eighteen, let me know, or let's please let City Administrator Knutson know because that would be really helpful. And the ports also announced that they have there in an annual investment fund of again of two hundred and fifty thousand. And I believe that we are working with the home port, with the Port of Tacoma and getting some funding for the home port. And that's my report.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Lycans, I see your video on. Did you have something yet?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind people that January is National Blood Donation Month. And the local Blood Work Northwest has put out a code red emergency in Western Washington and Oregon for urgently needed blood donations, which are down typically down during the holiday time. Just wanted to encourage people to reach out to the American Red Cross Cascade Regional Blood Bank. Or there is also Northwest Regional Blood Bank. And if you're able to donate blood, please consider doing so. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Speaking of that, Katrina, do you know if Michelle Thomas is working on another one for the Civic Center? I saw an email kind of going around, but I couldn't remember what timeframe that might have been talking about.
Yes, the Wellness Committee is working to have multiple blood drives here each year now. I think Shannon has left, but we'll make sure that we get information on that to the council and get that out to the community as well. The last blood drive that we had, we opened it up to the public. And it was very, very successful. So shout out to Michelle Thomas, our planning technician and community development for spearheading that. And that's something that we're really proud to be offering here at the Civic Center.
Great. Yeah, we'll keep everyone posted, social media, gigabyte, all of that, if we have that opportunity here again. Okay, I don't see any other lights. Announcement of upcoming meetings, we have our our document attached to this agenda that lets you know a couple months in advance what's coming up, which is subject to change, but gives you a good idea. And then, as always, our strategic plan is attached to that as well. Oh, just to mention, we will be on February eleventh, right, February eleventh, Saturday. We'll be having our council retreat from nine to four. So we'll be announcing where that's going to be. It'll be open to the public. If you'd like to join also hybrid, if you'd like to watch online for any portion of that. So we'll be talking about a lot of things there. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, getting meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.